All right, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Common Council of the City of Platteville on Tuesday, September 25th, 2018, and we'll start with roll call.
Don Francis?
Here.
Barbara Stockhausen?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Eileen Nichols?
Here.
Robin Klein is absent tonight. Sina Sharp?
Here.
And Barbara Doss?
Here.
First item on the agenda this evening is a planned unit development for 545 West Adams Street, and we will start with staff presentation.
Okay, yes, the property is located at the far west end of Adams Street. They're requesting a planned unit development for that property, and typically planned unit developments are reviewed and approved in two different stages. First one, general development plan, kind of outlines the general concept of the uses on the site and the number of units, that type of thing. And if that's approved, then they come back in for the second round where they get more specific about landscaping, building materials, and any other details that come up through the first round of approvals. This property is actually, the developer has requested approval for a couple other earlier versions of a project. Initially, what their request was for two duplexes on this site. Those were, both times were denied. So the plan has been revised, both the type of the building and the layout and et cetera, but now it's down to a three-unit residential building. If you're familiar with the duplex that was just constructed near the water tower on Elm Street, basically it's that building plus one additional unit attached to it. Same developer, same basic floor plan, just one additional unit. So the property itself is .67 acres in size, a little over 29,000 square feet. It has frontage on Adams Street and Hickory Street, but the access is from Adams Street. The Hickory Street frontage is very narrow, so it's not really usable for access purposes. So the building itself, as I mentioned, would have three units. Each unit would be a little over 1,200 square feet, one floor, no basement, two bedrooms, two bathrooms each unit, covered patio, covered front porch, and an attached two-car garage. And if you're familiar again with that duplex, you'd notice that it kind of slopes a little bit, one unit's a little bit lower than the other one. It would follow the same concept with this design. Actually, it steps down the hill a little bit. Each unit is about four feet in difference in elevation. Each unit would be, have a shared access road or driveway coming off of Adams Street, and then it would branch off leading to each garage for each unit. There's also pictures in the packet. This same building was constructed by the developer down in Keeler, so there's pictures of the actual three-unit building that's already been constructed. During the previous approvals, there were some concerns raised about the number of potential tenants on the property, even though that was four units at that time, but it's still the same concern. So the developer is proposing to include or allow the city to impose the limited occupancy overlay district on this property, so that would limit the number of unrelated individuals in each unit to two, a maximum of two instead of four, following the guidelines of the ordinance. If you look at the base zoning requirements for this property as an R2, there's certain lot size requirements to allow for certain construction of certain types of buildings. Single-family unit would have to have 8,000 square feet of lot area. Duplex would have to have 12,000 square feet. There isn't a limitation or a guidance for three units, but if you use that same math for that district, 20,000 square feet would be the minimum lot size you should have for a three-unit building. In this case, the lot has 29,000, so it's more than large enough following at least that rough guidance for a lot size. The two-car garage for each unit, plus there's additional parking in the driveway in front of each garage for each unit for guest parking. That meets the base parking requirements of the ordinance. The project does include a rain garden, stormwater management area for the development. And the site plan that's included in the packet also is a topo map, so if you look at that, if you're familiar with how to read those, it does indicate that basically the entire site will drain to that storage area except the area north of the driveway, which would drain directly into the drainage soil that's along the north-south side of the And the comprehensive plan, it designates this property for medium-density residential development, and by definition of the plan, that's for a maximum of 14 units per acre. This proposed development, three units on the .67 acres, is equivalent of four and a half units per acre, so it's well below that maximum recommendation in the plan. And actually, I did a calculation for the surrounding neighborhood, and that comes in at 5.8 units per acre. So this proposed development would be actually slightly less than the neighborhood average. So based on the fact that the, according to the base guidelines of the ordinance, the property is large enough for three units, it does provide adequate parking, there's occupancy limits that are proposed, and there's stormwater management proposed. Staff would recommend approval of the development as proposed, with the idea that any additional details on the development could be reviewed as part of the second round of approvals. Any questions?
You said, help me understand again what you said about the drainage. I've got the map up, so...
So the, based on the proposed lines drawn on there, the grading, proposed grading, it would have all the drainage coming from that site drain to that proposed stormwater management area, except the area to the north of the driveway, basically would not be able to be captured. So that would drain directly into the slopes, would be the first...
But the driveway?
The driveway would, as shown, the driveway would drain into that management area. They show it as it's got a slight dip or a swell in the middle of the driveway, and then it's got an inlet, kind of on the west end of the driveway that would capture that water, and then pipe directly to the management area.
So, I just need a little bit more education on this. Why can you only have two people that are unrelated living together?
So that was a provision in the ordinance, an overlay district that was developed a few years ago at the request of a neighborhood group that they wanted to have imposed on their neighborhood to prevent, basically to prevent the further sprawl of rentals. So it was just an overlay district. We wrote, they adopted, the council adopted for their neighborhood, so it's an overlay district that is in our ordinance. So the developer is basically saying to show that he has no intention of cramming a bunch of college students or other renters into this unit. He's willing to have that restriction imposed on this property.
Other questions for Joe?
The other thing I forgot to mention is that the plant commission meeting, this was considered in their September 10th meeting. There were two motions to approve the request with some conditions regarding stormwater management, but there was no consensus reached on that, so there was no agreement to either motion. So at this point, we don't have a recommendation from the plant commission.
A question. It's for Howard. Should I ask that later?
It's fine. It's fine, go ahead.
Okay, my first question is, looking at the first layout, does the rain garden pass over the storm sewer? There's a manhole at the start of this drainage way, looking at that first page. That's about 25 feet, roughly, 25 feet from the swell, from the concrete swell. And then that is shown going straight through to have another manhole down near Hickory Street. So my first question is, does the rain garden pass over the storm sewer?
Actually, that's a sanitary sewer that's there.
Sanitary sewer.
And it looks like the proposed rain garden area is over top of that sanitary sewer. The only concern that I would have would be the retaining wall over top of the sanitary sewer. Otherwise, any of the other items we can work with, driveways or the stormwater management area.
So this is, this is an easement, an easement over the sanitary sewer area, which follows along that embankment. Okay, my next question is, as far as the stormwater control, and you've given this to us before, how much do they need to restore the area to as far as the amount of runoff they're allowed to have from the property?
Under our current ordinances, they are allowed, they're required to restrict the release of stormwater from their property to match the undeveloped condition for anything up to a 25-year event. So by calculation, if the green grass area discharges five cubic feet per second now during a particular storm event, they have to create this stormwater management so that it will not release any more than five cubic feet per second after it's done. And they would have to retain the rest of the water that's collected off of the new impervious surfaces so that it can slowly drain at that rate.
My next thing is an observation. I look at the size of the three units and the driveway, and then I look at the size of the rain garden. Was there any calculation done as far as the size of the roof area? How much water would come from the roof area? How much would come from the driveways? And then how much capacity does the rain garden have? If we're going, if this is going, the rain garden is going over the sanitary sewer, then they're limited as far as how deep down they can go. So my question really is, can the raining garden accept the amount of water that's going to be coming off the driveway areas and the roof areas? Just looking at the size of these areas and the size of the rain garden, I don't see how that can take place. So I'm wondering, has there been any calculations presented to the city on meeting the stormwater requirements?
Not yet. I would think that that would be part of the specific implementation plan, should the council allow this to go forward.
And if it's found that this does not, rain garden does not meet the requirement, then what happens next?
They need to meet the ordinance requirements. I don't know what else to say. I mean, it wouldn't be able to pass if it doesn't meet the requirements.
Well, those are my questions for now. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, then we'll have the applicant statement. If you give your name and your address, please.
Dan Weddick, 2104 Lacy Court, Public City of Keeler, Wisconsin.
You speak into the microphone, please, Mr. Weddick.
You can, yeah, you can move that. There you go.
Dan Weddick, 2104 Lacy Court, Keeler, Wisconsin. Yeah, this is like, I think, the fourth time I've tried this now or something to that effect. And getting turned down, you know, I could handle it with no problem, as long as it was, no votes were based off, you know, the facts or the logic behind, had the logic behind them. I understand the neighbors are upset there's a vacant lot up there, and now there's going to be a building on it, one way or the other. If I lived up there, I'd probably have a little concern about that also. But if I also, if I lived up there and there's a person who bought it and had an idea of putting a decent-looking building on it versus the alternative of what most investors and developers are building in this area, two-bedroom or eight-bedroom duplexes and no storage and no curb appeal, I would at least sit down and be happy to listen what he's got to say. Some of the last meetings I was here, I had Delta 3 presenting the statistics and how the water runoff, how it would affect that storm drainage ditch, and it was minimal. And to my perception, most people weren't listening to what they had to say. Again, the city planner here, Joe, he's non-biased in this whole matter, and he seems to be for it. He looks at the facts, and he's educated in this, and he just looks at the facts. Somebody brought up the last meeting that the, I had no, I haven't spoke to the fire chief or communicated with him, but that's incorrect. The last time I spoke to the fire chief was about a year ago, and his response was to this whole project is that we'll work through it. It's not that big a deal. We'll figure out how to get trucks in and out of there. I feel like I'm trying to do the right thing here for the neighborhood and community, trying to put a nice-looking building on this property, which I think you have the pictures there, versus what a lot of other investors are doing. I listen to the neighbors and their complaints, and I, I don't know, I just have a hard time getting my mind around where they're coming from. I don't understand anyone, if someone's trying to design a nice-looking alternative versus student housing, why I wouldn't listen to it. There's enough student housing in that whole area, and you're going to have a huge unattractive building, large parking slab, no garages, no storage, everything that comes with college kids, you know. You'll have the mopeds laying out there in the yard, coolers, beer cans, the grills thrown out in the snowbanks, parties, and no sense of ownership, the tenants living there, to the community or the neighborhood. I feel like the council members, when the neighbors come up, and the next people to voice their concerns or reasons why not, please ask them to explain why they would rather have student housing than what I'm proposing. The nice-looking building with the wood, or the cement veneer, or the stone veneer front, and two-car garages with, you know, everything's going to be inside. My market to rents most of these buildings are the elderly, and once they move in, they don't leave, and they like to stay and take care of the neighborhood. So I would like, again, I'd like to state that, please ask questions to the neighbors when they're asking, or just trying to reason why there shouldn't be a nice-looking building there. Oh, and then I was just going to pass this off. This is, I think I showed this before, but this is basically, you know, student housing, this is what all comes with it. And there's a pretty good chance, if I get turned down, that may be what's going on there. I won't build it, but my builder, he's been wanting to buy that lot from me for the last two years, and that's what he specializes in. I don't really want to deal with students. Another reason, I feel I'm offering a reasonable option, especially if the neighbors are seriously concerned and honestly concerned about the water. If I build, or my builder builds, that eight-bedroom duplex, blah-looking building in the slab, you're not required to do anything with the water, and Howard can explain that more, but...
Yes, you are. Yes, you are.
Well, depending on how big you're going.
True.
Yeah.
Yes.
And there's ways to get around quite a bit of that, I feel. But anyway, but then if you vote yes, and I'm offering to handle 100% of that water, not just a third unit extra that I'm getting here for the three-plex, I'm offering to try to handle 100% of that water. And again, if, you know, when the neighbors get up here and they want to complain about the water runoff, I would like to know why they wouldn't want someone there that's going to try to handle 100% of that water versus just building a simple eight-bedroom duplex and dealing with college kids, and everything's just going to run right into that drainage ditch. And then there's some, one last thing, it's called a stormwater drainage ditch. I struggle why people are sort of concerned that there's water in it. I was there today during a lot of that rain, watched it. It could handle 10 times that. I feel it's the council's job to ask questions to people that are coming up here and doing the, voicing their concerns to get logical answers. It's my opinion, I like to put an attractive-looking building there and have it, whatever we decide, it's going to be there for a long time, and I'd rather have a nice, attractive-looking building and tenants that have a sense of responsibility to the neighborhood. I guess that's it. You have any questions?
Question?
A question for you and Joe. Why aren't you locating the property closer to, see what fence, what line would that be? Move it farther back toward the south. Is that right, south?
South?
Yeah.
Well...
You're so close to the drainage way.
Well, I have covered patios, rear patios on these buildings, and I'm trying to get, I'm trying to meet, you know, some of the setbacks. I'm trying to work with all the setbacks that are required, and even though PUDs, I guess, have their own, you can make up your own setbacks within reason, but they have to be approved, and I just pick that 25-foot mark, you know?
Is 25 feet, Joe, the requirement in R2?
Yes. Yeah, it's proposed it would meet the base setbacks.
And years ago, it was 40 feet.
Several years, many years ago, yes.
In my opinion, that print, I mean, that's just a rudimentary print. I mean, I didn't want to get involved in the cost of having it fine-tuned when I don't even know which direction the council's going to go here. And my opinion, like the driveway that he has going into, that could be reduced quite a bit. There's quite a bit of cement there in front to give more green area. And again, like the water retention pond, like questions you're asking, you know, if this was to give a tentative approval and goes to that next step of these meetings and trying to come up with a design, I mean, I got to build to meet all these requirements, you know? Otherwise, it's mixed, and I go back to the other plan and stick with what it's zoned for, which I hope it doesn't happen.
Now, so many questions.
So KD Engineering out of Dodgeville was your sketcher or draw or whatever?
Yeah, yeah.
And they're aware that that storm sewer, or the sanitary sewer goes through there? I mean, they would, would they have had that drawing? I mean, so they knew that...
The storm water or the sanitary?
The sanitary, wasn't it, Howard, that that stormwater pond is on the top of a sanitary sewer?
I'm, I'm, okay, you want Howard?
I can't say for certain what they did or didn't know, but they're showing the dashed line for a 20-foot easement that goes through there. I'm assuming by seeing those dashed lines on there that they understand that, but...
I would think so.
But rather than wasting their time or anybody else's time, if this doesn't get approved tonight, then there's no reason to go to the next step.
Right, I, yeah, I understand that. My question with that regard was, these stormwater management ponds or rain gardens or whatever they're at, however you talk about them, does that require excavation?
Yes.
And so, there, I mean, so there's a possible conflict?
A possible conflict.
Between, how deep do we bury our sewer lines?
I'd have to, I'd have to look at that one in particular. We put it in in 97, it was, I think it was between six and eight feet deep in that area.
How does this compare to that runoff area from the high school, down all the way to Super 8? Do you know what I'm talking about? There's a major runoff there next to all the houses, and it goes through some tubes, keeps going?
I haven't done any calculations, but the Water Street drainage area drains more area of the city than this drainage area does. I'd have to look to see how much more.
Have you had complaints? Have you had complaints about that runoff recently with the rain we've had from the neighbors?
Well, I mean, the one house, you'll hear from the people, they have a sump pump that continuously operates during wet times, but I haven't had specific complaints of where the water has been higher than normal for a typical rain event. I mean, five inches of rain in less than 24 hours, like we had last Thursday, is a very unusual event. I did not go here, I was looking at other things. I did not go here, but the issue here, you know, one of the questions that was before was whether or not the drainage culvert under Hickory Street was a limiting factor, and no, at this point, it is not. It's a four-foot-high by eight-foot-wide box that goes underneath Hickory Street, and there's a 60-inch diameter storm sewer that comes out at the top end of this, and the box can convey almost twice as much water as what can come out of that 60-inch diameter too.
One thing I wanted to say also, just occurred to me about this stormwater drainage, I don't think I should be held to a higher standard just because I'm right next to that ditch. I mean, if there's an issue with stormwater drainage, it starts way up the line. it starts way up the line, you know? I did that project over there on Elm Street, and even that water, by the way, even that water drains that way, but I didn't see anybody in there complaining then, you know? And that's the way I look at it. I mean, if you're gonna start stopping or voting no for something like this because of just the strength of stormwater, well, I mean, there's other building permits up, up the line that need to be looked at too, I'm sure. That's it. Any more questions?
Dan, without focusing on what else could be there, what makes this the best proposal?
The best proposal?
Yeah.
Well, to be honest, for one thing, Platteville needs some housing other than student housing, and there's a huge man out there, especially for elderly that want to get out of their homes, and they're great for the community, you know? Like I said, they have a sense of ownership to the neighborhood, they take care of everything, take pride in how the property looks, and I know that all too well because the retired are home all the time, and even the slightest little thing, I'm getting a call, because they're concerned about everything, you know, inside and out on that property, it's their home. And, uh, like I said, it's, it's a, it's, this is a nice-looking building, at least how I see it, versus any alternative, especially other investors, what they've been putting up throughout the city and neighborhoods, you know? At least, that's how I see it, you know?
Right, thank you. We'll go on to other comments. Again, we had asked individuals to fill out the green sheets if you wish to speak. So the next section, we put public statements in favor. I do not have anyone who's filled out that. Public statements against, we do have a number of people, so some have registered against and some have asked to speak, so the first one is, I would like to register against Pat Ballwig. The next is, I would like to speak Ben Ballwig. If you'd come up to the microphone, please, and give your name and address?
Ben Ballwig, four hundred Short Street, it's on the corner of Adams and Short. First and foremost, we are here again before the council because Mr. Wedig has come up with another, another appealing plan, hoping that the city council allow him to place more structures on an R2 zoning lot that is allowable. We recognize that he's made attempts to alter, alterations to his design to the, address the concerns raised, as well as understand his frustration in not receiving the support for each design. Essentially, all the designs have been basically the same. Place as, place as many housing units as possible on a lot and hope for approval. Please, please, please keep in mind that Mr. Wedig has not given a good explanation why exceptions to the R2 zoning should be made for him, beyond the obvious one of the return on his investment. Overfilling this lot with rental units does not benefit our neighborhood or our city. The reason can be seen in details of the plan and yet the unanswered questions. At the time of the planning commission, I had not picked up on the fact that there are two separate buildings drawn, these set three inches apart. Mr. Carroll's provided a property density comparison, which would believe that this is the amount of building is not out of the norm for the neighborhood, although it is. Due to this shape of the lot, these buildings are basically touching or allowing the two build, separate buildings to fit on a lot. This leads to the topics discussed at the planning commission meeting. We would like to thank the commission for thoughtfully discussing and recognizing the impact this plan would have. One, our biggest concerns throughout these meetings is going back to the first proposal has been runoff water by introduction of a large amount of imperious surfaces. This land is sloped piece of land with a drainage ditch directly at the bottom. We thank Barb Doss for her bringing very valid and timely points forth at the commission meetings. Through that discussion, it was learned that there are requirements which must, must be met for runoff. We also learned that those requirements can be strengthened by the council to protect those living downstream now and in the future. It was also guesstimated that a water retention pond would have to be quite large to contain rains that have been occurring these past two years. That was very telling of the recognition that these buildings would alter the runoff dramatically. Yes, we may have drier years, but we also have wetter ones. Two other points discussed at the commission concern snow removal on Adams Street and the fire safety. The snow removal discussion brought up definite probability of additional expense to the city for relocating the snow normally piled up at the west end of the street. Also, in the event of a fire, Mr. Wedig explained the fire department stated that no fire truck would be able to reach the buildings, hoses would. Nothing was addressed concerning delays with equipment, movement, especially when the second, every second counts. These are definite safety issues. Overall, this plan places unwarranted stress on the neighborhood and on the environment. We respectfully ask, did the council deny this request? Are there any questions?
What is your, um, what is your thought as far as just putting a duplex there, and that's it?
If he would construct one with the, um, they're nice-looking buildings, not denying that, but there's, that lot is zoned for one duplex. We have no issue with him putting on the duplex that he proposed and not the third unit. If it, um, you know, the discussion was brought up about the student housing, we could still ask that the council would place the overlay district on that lot to prevent that from happening, to preserve the existing neighborhood as it is with an R2 density.
So what about the water? That's been the biggest question that I've heard a number of times. What's your recommendation on water if you went to just one duplex unit? I mean, what do you want as far as water runoff?
Whatever it would be, to prevent any further water from entering there.
Now, you're, you live at the corner of Short Street and Adams?
Correct.
So you have runoff from that property?
Yes, I have water coming through my property and from my property.
From that, that lot?
No, I'm above, I'm upstream.
Oh, you're upstream.
The, um, discussion about the water from Wednesday storm, I was there, we were there.
What do you mean by "were there"?
We lived there, I mean, I was home. The, there's no doubt that the, the culvert, the bridge on Hickory Street can handle the water that comes out of the culvert. That's not a discussion, but the water went over the top of Hickory Street from all the other water that's coming in off of that lot and all the other lots in the area that drained on through there.
So did you have a wet basement?
Yes, I did.
From that water, or just normal?
From that storm.
Normal water when there's rain?
No. We've had, uh, water twice, we lived there seven years, and we've had water twice. I got pictures from what it looked like. It was July, July twenty-first of last year. We had the three-point-six inches, and we had, this is what the water looked like coming out. And we had water in our basement at that point, and then we had water last Thursday. And that's when, on the north side, or the, I guess it'd be the east side of Lancaster Street, there's, uh, you, are you aware of that, Howard?
The, uh, the holes in the, the holes in the backyard back there, yes.
And the water was coming over the top of Lancaster Street, down through our yard, and then down, again, on, down, on the way down to the same property. There's more water than what that storm, uh, storm culvert can handle.
I, I fully understand that. Most, most storm sewer culverts are not designed for that large of an event.
And this project would affect everybody downstream even more so.
All right, thank you. We have others who would like to speak. Next is Carol Beals.
Good evening, Carol Beals, I'm speaking on behalf of Geneva Beals, who resides at four seventy-five North Hickory Street, which, um, is in direct impact of where this property is to be placed, or where this triplex is to be placed. We've been down this road before, kind of feels like Groundhog Day all over again. We will continue to, um, define to you that, um, even though Mr. Carroll says the lot is big enough, it's irregularly shaped, it disappears and is very narrow as you go towards Hickory Street, so all the impact is upstream from my mom, from my mom's house. It's zoned R2, it's zoned for one building or one duplex, not a triplex, not two duplexes, not four, fourplexes, or two fourplexes, or whatever else he's throwing out at us. I would like to point out that it's not all student housing. When you go north on Hickory Street, it's families and small families with children, it is not all student housing there, and I think the students got a really bad rap here tonight by Mr. Wedig. The bill, the lot itself is built for exactly that, one house or one duplex. That alone would create enough runoff into Geneva's basement. The sump pump has been running nonstop for, since we got the five inches, I think, but even, even on regular rains of an inch or two, her sump pump will run. It doesn't get above the sump pump most of the time, like it did this last time, you know, hundred-year storms are supposed to only happen every hundred years, but they're happening every other week now. But now, tonight, I didn't go over there tonight, my husband did, but her sump pump will run, you know, continuously for days now, again, and we do have water still left over from last week's flood, or rainfall, and so we'll have it from this week as well. The water itself in the back, where the creek comes through, or the stormwater comes through, was within eighteen inches of her foundation, not depth width, not depth eighteen inches, but width from the house. That's how fast it came through and how high it rose, it went over Hickory Street. It went over top of the, what do you call that, concrete thing on the bottom of Washington? It went over top of that, too. You can drive down there and you can see how high the water went. We've been through this several times, as Mr. Wedig has said, and several times we will continue to come back because it's zoned for R2, that would be enough, and probably more than what is currently, obviously, it would be more than what is currently being handled there, but it would create extra water coming down through that storm ditch and probably cause more water from time to time into, into mom's basement. So we are opposed to it, again.
Thank you, Carol.
Question?
Yes, sir.
What type of, uh, improvements have been attempted on your mom's house?
Improvements on my mom's house?
Yeah.
Like what?
To deal with this problem.
Installing sump pumps? What do you mean? I, I, I'm not clear what your question is. We put a sump pump in, you know, because, and we're about to put a second one in, because it's not keeping up.
You haven't yet. Anything else?
There's a rock wall that goes down into the ditch. I, I'm not sure what you're asking. Am I missing something? Okay.
Yeah, if, if there's a problem, what are you doing to try to fix it?
We put a sump pump in. It's just, I mean, what else do you want me to do? Move the house?
Okay, if the sump pump fixed the problem, then you wouldn't be talking about it. So what else have you tried or have thought of?
Besides moving her house to higher ground, I don't know what you want me to do. I, I, I'm really not sure, I'm not, I'm not sure what you are looking for.
Just mention how you might think about a second sump.
So I'm not sure what you're looking for.
Just asking if you've considered anything else to try to fix the problem that you're saying you have?
I guess no, because I don't know what you'd want me to do. So, I mean, she's eighty-nine years old, I don't know what you want her to do, or what you want us to do, so, I'm sorry. The house has been there longer than any of the properties in the back, or, you know, I, I have no idea what you want me to...
Okay, so you just mentioned that you might consider a second sump pump?
We might have to. Well, if this goes in, there'll be more than one pump can handle, so you'd have to put a second one in.
Okay, so that's something, an idea that you would consider doing even right now, based on the problem that you currently have?
Okay.
Right?
Okay, I think the question has been asked in answer to the best of the
Thank you.
Speaker's ability.
I, I do have a question.
Yes.
The sump pump was put in when the house was put in?
Um, probably not, because, no, no, the sump pump would have been put in after, when they redo the street ninety-seven, did Howard say?
The, the sanitary sewer was, was put through there in ninety-seven.
So, the sump pump went in after that, and we just recently replaced it.
Thank you. Uh, next is Ellsworth Hood.
Yes, Ellsworth Hood, I live at five eighty West Cedar Street, which is directly south of this property, and that means I'm uphill from this property, so the drainage is not so much my problem, because the drainage from my yard is going to this stream. It's only a few feet across there, uh, from one, uh, piece of land to the other. And so, uh, my real concern here actually is the concern for my neighbors. It's not really impacting me that much, except the rain garden would, because that's a huge rain garden, and however deep or whatever they put in there, uh, is, is gonna have to be pretty large in order to be able to handle the water, even the water just comes off it naturally. But I had, uh, pretty much decided, uh, you know, I think if, if he would just reduce this to a duplex, I'd just say, well, probably can deal with the rainwater, okay? But I walked down there somewhere between Wednesday night and Thursday morning, and there was water over the road. Now, I put on my waterproof boots before I went down, they're eight-inch boots, see? I walked through the water on purpose, and I got wet feet. This is a water over Hickory, see? So that conduit or whatever it is, it's under Hickory Street, is not really handling the kind of waters we're getting now. It did when they put it in. I've lived in this house for fifty years or more now, so I kind of know what's happening in the neighborhood. But, but the, uh, impact of the water, and that much water going over Hickory Street, kind of changed my mind, I'm not even sure of the duplex. But I, we are confronted with an either-or, you know? Either we have the duplex, or we have a cheap piece of crap that nobody wants to look at or live in. I guess I'd take the duplex and then see what I could do about the water. And then the question, what is, uh, what are the Beals has done for the water? Their house was there before I moved to Platteville. Uh, and so it, it was there for a very long time, and they, uh, actually did quite a bit of, of work on the grounds behind their house, see, to raise the level of that land so the water, when it backed up the stream, didn't circle around and come back into their yard. But at this point, as, as they were remarking, as Carol was saying, the water is backing up because it can't get through under Hickory Street, and it's swirling. You can see it swirl. And as it does that, it was getting up so that it was over the retaining wall that's there, then with only a foot and a half away from the house itself. And the question, what can you do? I suppose move the house. I don't know, what else do you do that, other than, you know, what nature is doing? And I think nature has the uphand on this one. I think geologically and geographically, the triplex certainly is simply not suited for that piece of land. It's a nice tri- a nice duplex, there's no question about that. But the piece of land itself is just not physically suited to having much more construction than maybe a single-family home that's not a very big one. So, any questions?
I have one. Um, so we keep coming back to all this water that's backing up. But the triplex isn't even there yet, so isn't that a structural problem with the drain now that should be addressed? It's not the developer's fault that it's not working? So, I don't know if there's another issue here that needs to get fixed as well. But I was just curious, like, because like you said, that there's already a lot of water that's happening, a lot of water that's going on, so that's not being dealt with already. And this piece of land needs, is going to get a building of some sort in it, no matter what, so the, the water runoff will increase no matter what. So, shouldn't there be like a focus on the structure of the drain? Or like, you know, how the water runoff is happening already? I don't know if that's appropriate time to talk about this. But I just keep hearing how the, the drain already isn't working, you know? So, I don't know if there's a solution to this problem, or if I'm asking the right question. Does it make sense? You know?
Yeah, yeah, I, I think that, yeah, there is an issue. Could the city spend the money and raise Hickory Street again? You know, and put an even larger conduit under it to see if then it can drain the rest of the water that's, that's coming in there. But unless the city's willing to do that, to add to the runoff problem is going to exacerbate the Beals' problem. That's my concern.
Yep, and I think that that would be a discussion council would have to have with staff at some point, whether or not there is a possibility of looking at it, if the council chooses to take that tact. So, thank you. Uh, last person is Charlie Chamberlain.
Don, nice evening. When Harold was alive, Harold Beals, I'm Charlie Chamberlain, I own 560, 570, 580, 590, West Adams. When Harold was alive, you asked the question about what more could be done? A couple, four or five times to Carol. He put a pit in, at his expense, and has a runoff then. So, you know, it's draining into that and going into the swale. You know, that's at his expense, all right? Does that answer that? What more could be done? Does that answer that?
I'm just wondering if like any professional engineers were asked or consulted about the land and the foundation.
Possibly they were. I'm not saying, he dead, Harold's dead now, and I, so I, I don't know, but possibly they were. And they said, "Put, don't put a six-inch, put it," because it's a fairly large, have you been over to, you've been over by there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's a fairly large opening. The grating is pretty large, and the tube going over into this is fairly large, okay? That helps, I hope it helps. You had her corner.
These are some pictures.
This is some pictures of some ponds here in town. You know, five-minute drive, fifteen-minute walk from right here. I don't want this next to my property. I don't know, many more, you take a look at this, all of you look at this, real good. And maybe some of you wouldn't mind having it in your neighborhood. I don't want it next to mine. There's enough mosquitoes and gnats around the area now. My tenants like to get out, they like to grill, enjoy the weather. They don't want to be swatting bugs all day. You know, take a look at those. The one there's got my wife's thumb in it, so. Pretty much, a lot of what I wanted to say has been said. This, this water thing, this, this starts up by the hospital, and it grows. And on the other side of our, of the highway, from us, there's two grates over there that are to accept down into the tube water, that was shooting out of those grates, both of them. And you can ask Mr. Crowfoot here, how big of erosion, how big, you can see, actually see the size of the tube from, from the erosion there. So, the, the water that's coming off this building, it's one thing, but it's not the major thing. The major thing is the water, if you stood there, when this, my tenant called me at 590, and the sump pump won't quit. And that water is because it went over the highway, not Hickory, it's going over that also. But it went over the highway and down through my backyards, into my driveway, into my apartment. And this water all is down in the, the swale, in the culvert, and, and this is a, this is the big point here for me. We understand that if they want to put a pond in, they can't put the pond in with the grade, which is there currently. They have to level it to accept and to hold water. So, that's an obstacle, right? Water can be directed, it's directional. So, the water's going to come down and hit that, and where is it going to go? If you look at the picture here, Mrs. Beals' is virtually right across from this, right across, right here. So, that water that's going to hit this pond, the berm, is going to go where? This retaining wall, which is over a sanitary sewer, which shouldn't be, it's going to hit this, this retaining wall. You could see, if you went over, even yesterday before this rain, the foliage out of that moved thirty feet up, up into the south, up toward the apartments, thirty feet out of the drainage ditch, up. And of course, then it went over and into Mrs. Beals', so that wasn't as high. But thirty feet, imagine that, so it's up above this pond, and with the force, where this water's coming from. It's, it's, you can control it, you can direct it, and, and it's going to get directed once it hits this retaining wall, which we don't know anything about. There's so many variables here. We don't know the size of the pond, deep, dry pond, wet pond, how wide is it? I don't want this pond next to my property, for multiple reasons. One, the insects. In the State Journal now, there's something written all the time, because this water is big up Madison. It's, it's a really problem, it's a big problem. So, now the, you know, the scientists up there say that dogs drink out of this. The kidneys and livers are going to be subject. Children get into it. It's, it's, it's a pond. It's a pond of stagnant water. And I, you know, I don't, I don't want it near my property. And like I say, anybody who wants their hands that wants it near theirs. The staff says parking's adequate. How do we know that parking's adequate? How many people are going to be in these buildings? And I don't know either. You know, if we go to page two and look at three, where two unrelated individuals with any children, either both, we're talking about two adults in there could have three or four people living with them. Five or six people in that apartment? I don't know. You know, how many driver's licenses are going to be? How many vehicles are going to be in this driveway? How, how can you actually say that parking's adequate when you don't know how many cars are going to be available? There are two-car garages. How many people are, have got neighbors or friends, or maybe their own homes? Uh, but one garage has got the boat, the ATV, the ladders, the grills, and everything. Only one, one apartment, or one, one part of the garage is available. It's another situation. So, they're going to park all the way on this, this driveway here, and, and then winter comes, which it's gonna, and now they're going to plow the snow where? You can't plow it to Hickory Street, you can't plow it south into the building. We plow it into the, into the swale. Now, we got freeze frost come spring, freeze frost, freeze frost. It's just another situation. This is all a bunch of stuff that you don't, you folks are, you know, they keep saying, "Well, we won't go any further with drawings, answers, designs, nothing, until we know more." That's a little too late. It's too late. If, if, if you want a pond, you know, I, I can use, like Walmart, they, they got a pond, but they've got some real good staff and some real thinkers. Where's their pond? Way at the end of the parking lot. I was out there Saturday, and I kind of paced it up. Way at the end of the parking, across the highway, and into the ditch in between Reese's and Hibbs' and McDonald's. And there's probably a good reason why McDonald's doesn't have outdoor seating. That's a big pond, too. That pond is way out of the way, and no neighbors have to, except for Reese's and McDonald's, have to put up with it, right? So, we're going to have a pond in the neighborhood. I really don't want it, for multiple reasons, and I think I've expressed them. It's just no good. This is too much. This is too much building on this property. It's R2 for a reason. The frontage is wrong, but we're, we're doing all this stuff to come around from behind. You know, we can't go straight at this, because you can't go straight at this. It won't work. I don't know. A lot of what I was going to say has been said. If we were listening, this water's an issue, it's a big issue. But only for this neighborhood, you know, it's, it's, the pond, all this, it hurts us, this neighborhood. It's no good. You know, I, I just, as a, you know, you've got a, a triplex, no basements, so you know these garages are going to be full. It's just, there's, you know how it is, it's storage, and you've got to have more room. And, and then they attempt to say that there's going to be more than ample parking. Well, how do we know? How, how do we know? Can we get a full body count, a definite affirmative full body count, before you make a decision? I, I don't think for us to ask that, that's too much. I'd like to know. Is it going to be six or twenty-six? And that makes a real of a difference on getting in and out of Adams Street. You know, the dead of winter, we always got to think of the dead of winter around here. I do. If they can't get in or can't get out of the city. I've got three driveways, and they've been plugged up before with cars that couldn't get around. They come down from Cedar Street and park in my driveways. I've got four people. I've got four apartments, four people. And they need to go to work, all but one of them. I, I, I guess, I don't know, this, this has kind of got me, between this and the last council, or plan commission meeting, it kind of got me a little wound up. I, I just, I, it's, I, I, you know, I don't know what else to say. It's just, everything I read through here, you know, and I look at it, and I see, I did notice where they have the three-inch gap in between the buildings, so it's a duplex and single-family. And there's a three-inch gap, and that's to get away from safety issues, you know? You don't have to put in sprinkler systems. You, you don't, you know, you can kind of skirt around some stuff. You know, and it's got curb appeal, and no one's going to say it doesn't have curb appeal. It's a nice-looking thing. I know some people like to stick money in the buildings. Some people like, I don't know who's going to drive by there. Anybody drive by there much? Who's going to drive by and see it? It's going to be pretty, but for who? I, you know, is it going to have fancy, high-end cabinets, granite countertops?
I think that's going a little above and beyond, Charlie. Go ahead.
What's that?
Okay.
You interrupted. What's, what's that?
No, I, I think that getting to what the interior design is, is not really.
Well, no, no, I didn't bring that up. I didn't bring that up.
Okay.
It was brought up that these are high-end apartments.
Right, okay.
I didn't bring that up. Okay, all right. I, I guess you want to put a damper to me talking anymore, or is that anyway?
No, no, I think that, as you said, a lot of points have already been made. If you have something new to add, please add that.
Well, okay, I, I guess I don't have to anything add, as long as what we've said is understood. The water that's damaging our neighborhood, it's running over and going into my basement at 590, is coming from the, the old hospital area down. It's, it's, if you stood at that culvert, my tenant called me really early, and I went over there. If you stood and looked at that culvert, it washed you away. That's how the force of that water was coming out of there, and it's going thirty feet up into the field, or up into the hill. Do you understand? You know, and, and now we've got a retaining wall to deal with, it's over top of a sanitary sewer, that's all wrong. And the retaining wall, it's going to bounce off that and go right, it, it just, I, I don't know, maybe some people could say, "Well, Mrs. Beals has got four or fifty gallons of water in here for storm now." What's another couple hundred, you know, but that's the wrong attitude. Well, you know, that's why I've tried to bring to you that she's doing, or Harold did what he could while he was alive. But Mrs. Beals is quite old now, and, and, all right. I'll quit, I guess you.
No, no, that, that's fine.
I do have a question.
You have a question?
So, you say 590 West Adams?
Five ninety.
So, is that a duplex?
Yes, it is.
So, 580 and 590?
Yes, it is.
They're a duplex together?
Yeah.
Okay, and do you own the property directly to the east of that on Lancaster?
Uh, no.
Okay, so that apartment you don't.
That big building there, that fairly new building? There, is that the one?
Fairly new.
I tried, I was at council meetings trying to put a stop to that. I never got water. Ben never got water, and the people prior to Ben, until that was built. And I tried to explain to them, once they elevate that property, raise that property up, to build that, the rest of us go, "Whoa, now I got water. Ben's got water." But we couldn't stop it, you know, there was a civil engineer sitting here, and a few knew it all.
And your duplex is how big?
How big?
Yeah, how big, you have a duplex there? How big is your duplex?
Oh, I, I think it's like sixty feet long and thirty feet wide. Or, deep. I think. I guess I've never really measured.
Any other questions?
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, public statements in general, I have none. Just set the photos down here. Council discussion.
So, could you explain that the fact that there, is this built as two buildings?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Is this constructed as two buildings?
It's one structure.
Is this proposal two buildings?
It's one structure.
It's one structure.
You're correct.
So, where's the three-inch comment coming from?
So, there's a, it's in the Uniform Dwelling Code or the, the building code that allows a certain structure to be constructed, that allows it to not have to be engineered as a three-unit building. But the shingles will cover the gap, the siding will cover the gap. It will be one structure as you're looking at it.
I just keep hearing about this water problem. I guess, but should like developers, like wanting to come in, also be penalized for it? Or should we fix that problem as the city has a responsibility, but also allow business to come in, and allow developers to come in, and allow for extra tax-paying dollars to happen? I guess that's my question.
Are you addressing that question?
I don't know. I'm just, I'm, I guess, it's not, I think there's a bigger problem here than this house, like, than this unit coming in, and I think it's the water. So, I think it needs to, we need to deal with the water thing, too, but I don't think they're the same issue.
I think, as far as the neighbors are concerned, it is part of the concern.
Okay, right, absolutely.
And, but, yes, you're right, that's not what we're asked to specifically address this evening. So, you can consider that when you are asked to approve a planned unit development.
So, I have a question. This is an R2, right now, it's an R2 district. So, if someone were to put up a duplex, is there a restriction on how big that duplex could be?
They would have to meet the building setback requirements.
So, they would have to meet basically the same requirement that Mr. Wedig has meant here, which is twenty-five feet from, it appears, the back lot, or whatever that's called. Ten feet from the side lot? Is that kind of?
Twenty-five, ten, and ten.
Pardon?
Twenty-five, twenty-five, ten, and ten.
Twenty-five, twenty, and so he's twenty-five feet from Hickory Street, is that it?
Well, he's much farther.
Much more than twenty-five feet from Hickory. And twenty-five feet from the south lot line, and ten feet from the east lot line. And who can figure out where he is from the other lot? Yeah, okay, but it, it would have, it could potentially have the same footprint, cover as much of the lot.
Correct.
And how about a single-family dwelling?
Same rules.
Same rules, so it'd be twenty-five, twenty-five, ten, and ten?
Correct.
And it could have the same, I mean, it could be this size building?
Correct.
So, really, whether it's three units, two units, or one unit, it could all be thirty-six hundred square feet. That's what this is about, twelve hundred square feet.
Yes, that's true.
A unit.
Right.
And our, 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 our low district says two non-related people can live in a unit, or a family.
Yes.
So, so this could be a family, it could be a husband and a wife that have children with both marriages. It could be two unrelated people who have children. It could be a young couple who has a baby, could be older people. Yet, is there any way to project, do we have any code, any housing anywhere, that limits or requires a person to say how many people?
Uh, we would not be allowed to limit the number of family members that could live at residence anywhere in the city. That would be in violation of federal law.
So Barbie, have anything else? Ken?
Now, as far as other code requirements, it's Zone R2, but you're getting around that by requesting a PUD. You're requesting a PUD, right?
His request for tonight is a planned unit development, yes.
Pardon?
The request tonight is for a planned unit development.
Yes, but that gets around the zoning as far as you don't have to follow R2.
It's a replacement zoning instead of...
You're replacing the R2 with the PUD. And then the next thing, as far as I can see it's being done, is you're not meeting the frontage requirement, which is 100 feet.
Lot size isn't gonna change no matter what the zoning is.
Well, the lot size is, should be, how many thousand? 8,000 for, for the single family, 12,000 for duplex. So you have enough space, but what has been mentioned before is that we have a lot which is odd. So some of that space is not very useful as far as a property. So I, to me, I discount the 29,000 square feet because of the odd shape of the, of the property. So at least two things are not being met. And you're using a PUD, and one is the frontage, and the other one is the number of units on the property. Anything else that's not being met by using the PUD?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Those two things?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Let the council discussion. Hearing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Make the first motion.
Ken.
Barb.
Oh, Barb, I'm sorry. Ken, second.
Francis.
Yes.
Stockhausen.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Sharp.
Yes.
Doss.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Come on, council action. The request is for a planned unit development at 545 West Adams, and staff also notes that the Arlo Limited Oxypency Residential Overlay District would also be part of the designation if the planned unit development is approved. Please include that in your motion.
I make a motion, we approve the PUD to allow this three-unit residential building at the property at 545 West Adams. I also make a motion, I include in that the placing of the RLO Limited Residential Overlay designation on the property. As this is the general development plan, it's my understanding that the specific specifics will come back again. The expectation is that the water will be retained on the property in the storm water management plan for a 25-year storm.
Second the motion. Motion and a second. We'll vote.
Francis.
Yes.
Stockhausen.
Yes.
Killian.
No.
Nichols. Klein. Sharp.
Yes.
Doss.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we're gonna go on to the consideration, the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to the routine nature of previous discussion. Please indicate to the council president if you prefer a separate discussion and action. In your packet, you have council minutes from the August 28th special meeting and the September 11th regular meeting. Also payment of bills. Appointments to boards and commissions. I have the following appointments this evening. To the Board of Appeals zoning, there are two, three-year terms ending in 10, 121, and the appointees are Mary Miller and a reappointment of Michael Knautz. On the Community Safe Routes Committee, a partial term ending in 9, 120, Danika Larson. For the Water and Sewer Commission, two five-year terms ending in 10, 123, Tom Knoll and John Miller. Under licenses, we have the temporary Class B to sell fermented malt beverages to, to the Alumni Association for the Alumni Beer Tent at Valley View Park in an enclosed tent on Saturday, October 6th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. Also in the packet, information about one-year and two-year operator licenses to sell and serve alcohol. We have permit requests, a banner for UW Plattville Homecoming on September 21st until October 6th. The parade permit, UW Plattville Homecoming Parade on Saturday, October 6th, starting at 7:00 a.m. I think that's the time when people line up, not when it starts. Number three, the Run/Walk, UW Plattville for the Homecoming Hustle on Saturday, October 6th, starting at 7:30 a.m. Also UW Plattville for the Homecoming Torch Run on Saturday, October 6th, starting at 7:45 p.m. And the Plattville Community Arboretum for the PCA Monster Dash on Saturday, October 27th, starting at 9:00 a.m. We have street closing requests. UW Plattville for the Homecoming Parade and Hustle on Saturday, October 6th, from 7:00 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. St. Augustine for Oktoberfest on Saturday, October 6th, from 3:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. St. Augustine's for Dinner with UW Plattville Students on October 3rd, from 4:00 p.m. till 8:00 p.m. St. Augustine for Dinner with UW Plattville Students on October 10th, from 4:00 p.m. until 8:00 p.m. And St. Augustine for Dinner with UW Plattville Students on October 17th, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
I would ask that we have separate discussion on the requests from St. Augustine's. This would be B, C, D, and E.
And otherwise, are you moving acceptance of the rest?
Are you moving to accept the rest of the consent?
I move to accept the rest, except for those listed, B, C, D, and E.
I'll second.
We have a motion to accept the consent calendar with the exception of 4B, C, D, and E for further discussion. We'll vote.
Francis.
Yes.
Stockhausen.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Sharp.
Yes.
Doss.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, so we have a request for a separate discussion on St. Augustine's request. I will let you know there are two individuals here who can answer some questions. So if you have questions, well, we can have them come up first. Ken, do you have some questions initially or...
Are they gonna, whoever are they gonna speak regardless?
Haley, okay, so we have Haley York and Sandra Coretto, is that correct? Okay, and Haley is going to speak with Sandra willing to speak if needed. So if you could give your name and your address, please.
My name is Haley York. I live at 210 North Chestnut Street. I'm the Director of Campus Ministry at St. Augustine's University Parish. So we are coming to request the four different events. The first three is Oktoberfest, I believe it's October 6th. So that's a yearly event that we put on to encourage our alumni to come back to enjoy, to join in on our homecoming events, both at University of Wisconsin Plattville as a whole, as well as at our St. Augustine's Parish. So we are just requesting the street for that particular event, and I can talk more about that in a moment, why the street request. And then the latter three, on October 3rd, 10th, and 17th, we have a free weekly dinner that we offer for students. It is every Wednesday throughout the school year, both in the fall and the spring. We were requesting these dates in particular, while the weather's still nice. We have noticed, as we've been keeping track of our attendance levels, that our attendance is significantly higher. Whenever we are able to have our events outside, we are outgrowing our space in our cafeteria at the moment, and so it is constraining our events and that we are able to be more effective whenever outside. We have a 40% increase in attendance. So that was the reason for the request, both for all of the dinners outside for those through particular weeks, as well as for Oktoberfest itself because of the space limitations within, and also the greater effectiveness of our events whenever we have them outside. Is there any questions that myself or Sandra can answer for you?
First of all, the homecoming event, is that something you've done every year for how many years? Do you know?
I know it has been done in previous years. It was not done last year. Before that, both Sandra and myself have been around for approximately three or four years, so I can't speak to the longstanding nature of the event, but I know it has been done before. Although not last year, I will concede.
Well, one thing about that event is that it overlaps as far as time with the game. So that homecoming, there can be people coming in that may not know their, their way around very well or using, what do you call it, GPS. And so Hickory Street is a major street, so I can see some problem there as far as shutting off that street because you do have overlap there with the game and your request.
I agree with Counselor Killian, and I would ask if you have considered instead requesting the closure of Greenwood Avenue. That Greenwood, that would be on the south side of your building.
The north side of the building.
Yes, I was also going to suggest Bradford, Bradford and Greenwood. And you, you have parking along there, and you have extra parking at St. Mary's so that people using the parking that day could move to St. Mary's or some other place to give you more space and then to give up the use of the Hickory Street.
We had originally decided on Hickory Street itself as it's more visible in nature to be able to encourage students to join our event. And in regards to going around, the idea of the fact that it might block some football traffic, I would point out that it is a very easy detour to go around the building itself. As pointed out, based on the way that the streets are, you just have to take two extra rights and you can get right around it. And the event itself, we have here from 3 to 9, the 3:00 nature, the, the actual event starts at 5. The 3:00 nature is in regards to setup, and the 9:00 nature is in regards to takedown. So if there was a concern about overlapping with the event, I'm not sure if that addresses that concern or not, but...
So the actual event starts at 5, so could you put the request at 5 instead of 3?
The problem with that would be the idea of setting up for the event. So the meal would be in the street, and so we would need chairs. We have games like bags and other games going on, so the setup would need to happen. We could push it back to 4, but I'm not sure if that would address the request or the problem there or not.
I really oppose this closing of this street on homecoming. And I, I would actually make a motion to deny that street request closing for South Hickory Street at that time.
October 6th.
For the October 6th, homecoming day.
I'll second the motion. What about the other three?
Well, I think we have to vote on the one motion first.
We're working just on 4B, which is St. Augustine for Oktoberfest on Saturday, October 6th, from 3:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
I think there are other options that are available, and, and that those other options, when weighed against the number of people attending one versus the other, I think that it's important to keep Hickory Street open.
I would concur with that. The game starts at 2:00. People are obviously going to be coming before 2:00, but some of them will arrive at 2:00, and normally games are at least two hours, so then you've got 4:00 and people will be leaving. And I think that people who are not familiar with our community, that is the direction they will expect to go to access activities on campus and also parking. And so I have concern about closing that portion and requiring people to go around in residential areas in order to access parking and the game. So that would be my reasoning for not actually approving that. So we have a motion and a second to deny 4B, which is October 6th. Is there any other discussion by any of the council members?
Got other questions?
I have a question, and I should have asked this before. UW Plattville for Homecoming Parade and Hustle, it doesn't show the street, street closing. Is it Hickory?
I think it's the museum.
Application, it probably did show it, Barb, but I don't have that in front of me. So it...
Because I will say, if it's both of these events are on the same street...
They're at different times.
They're at different times.
The Homecoming Parade, I believe, goes up to 11:30. Far as closure.
Well, if anybody's been in this parade, they congregate in those parking lots and they take Hickory Street, I think, to go down Main Street, right?
Yeah, they meet on Hickory.
That was my question. How does it get posted for a street closing? Would we have multiple signs reading different times or...
If you have the chief of police here who can answer that question.
There are, before you sit there, uh, sit. You have approval on two of these street closings of the four.
Right.
Okay.
To answer Robyn's question, typically we don't park, or post for no parking. We do for the parade routes. It's gotten to be a demand on staffing, and typically the street closures are small enough in nature that we resort to barricades, usually borrowed from the city garage.
So that barricade would just go up at 3:00, and if someone still had their car there, they would just have to figure out what to do with it?
Typically, they're not positioned in a way that would hinder them from getting out. But on the application for approval for the October 6th, I had strong reservations about that as well because of the homecoming for, excuse me, the homecoming football game.
The other question I had was just out of curiosity, if you have hosted anything across the street in the campus parking lots? Obviously, for homecoming, we're talking about floats there all day and everything too, but has that occurred or has that been pursued as far as for visual?
Not to my knowledge.
My concern is that all their applications for Hickory don't ask the university for their signing off of, as opposed to the university's application. They ask St. Augustine's, so they're, they're not asking the university because...
I'll just add that I did include Sergeant Jason Williams in with this, even though there is not an approval on the form, and he did email back as well. He didn't have a problem with the majority of them, except for this homecoming application.
All right, any other questions about the...
I, I would amend my motion. There is a motion on the floor. For, to offer that if, if they wanted to put their event on Greenwood, which would be directly to the south, I would offer the amendment that that be allowed. We're getting close to the 6th, but definitely, so it would not be Hickory Street. It would be, I would move, I would offer the amendment to allow them to use Greenwood between Hickory and Bradford, Bradford?
What about Bradford Street also?
I think, I'm just, I'm just saying one street. So my amendment is to allow use from, of Greenwood Avenue from South Hickory to Bradford if they file the appropriate paperwork.
Second to that amendment.
I second it.
All right.
So can you, can you reread, reread your amendment, your...
Original motion?
Or the new one?
So I think, I think by Robert's Rules of Orders, you have to vote on the amendment first.
That's correct.
And then you also then vote on the motion. So the amendment is to allow the event on Hickory, on Greenwood, between South Hickory and Bradford if the appropriate paperwork is filed, which would then amend the motion to deny the use of South Hickory, but offer an alternative.
So I will say that I would be reluctant to approve Greenwood when I think about the fact that on the north side of Greenwood, there are a number of houses that rely on parking for those houses, and they back out and drive in on Greenwood. parking for those houses, and they back out and drive in on Greenwood. So if they are present during that weekend, they would not have access to their parking.
I don't think that's true.
South side.
Greenwood is south up.
On the south side, on the south side of Greenwood.
Okay, so there's one big fraternity house.
And there's another house at the other end.
That faces onto Bradford.
Uh, yes, but they park off Greenwood. So that would be my concern, that they would not have access to their parking. And it will be, I think, a weekend when people are going to be present for the festivities.
And that would be a reason to vote down the amendment.
So we have an amendment to the motion, we're going to vote on the amendment first. Does everybody understand the amendment?
Well, your concern is that about the parking for the other people. St. Augustine's can make arrangements for the other people to move their vehicles. That's not a big deal.
Certainly, they could offer that, Kim.
The amendment would have them make another application for Greenwood, which, of course, asking for the signatures of the people that's affected.
They would have to file, but it wouldn't have to come back here. But they would have to file the appropriate paperwork and get the sign offs and stuff,
All right, we're going to vote first on the amendment.
Francis?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
No.
Klein?
No.
Sharp?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Amendment.
Excuse me, amendment carries.
Motion itself. Now we vote on the motion. The motion itself is not to permit the closure of Hickory Street.
Francis?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, so that addresses 4B, which is St. Augustine for the Oktoberfest on Saturday, October 6th.
I personally, I don't, now we've got the other three, right? There's three additional ones. Okay. And so I per, I mean, my understanding of street closures is that they are special, kind of special occasions. We allow Division Street to be closed for a street party, we allow, but we don't regularly close streets three weeks in a row for an event. So I guess I have a concern about that, and if we need to, I mean, I have a concern about that closure three weeks in a row. It seems like there should be a place on the property. I mean, yes, for a special occasion, and we've done other special occasions, but I think it's hard to believe that three weeks in a row.
Other comments or questions?
Well, I was thinking about, like, for snow removal or asphalt installation, whatever, there's a notice that says the parking lot clears out for the day. Is that something you could do to your tenants to clear out a particular parking lot to hold an event? And then also, your green space in the middle of the property, I thought was definitely emphasized as a communal space, so as far as addressing what's on your property that you can be using, I don't know if you want to speak to why those alternatives would not work or?
As far as the parking lot, we haven't looked into that yet. We still are, we're working with the tenants there to make that a possibility. As far as the green space, we do intend to use that fully once the grass is finished growing, so we're trying not to damage the work of those who have paid good money to
I actually concur with Robin. I think that trying to use something on the property itself so that we don't have to have street closings, I think this would actually make the fourth street closing, because I think you had one about two weeks ago as well on Hickory Street.
We had one on Saturday for one of our one-time yearly events.
And so I think having it on the grounds itself or in your cafeteria, as you said, or in the lower level of St. Augustine's.
Either way.
Would also, you know, between those two, I think that I would prefer that. So is there a motion regarding the four, C, D, and E request? They are asking for a street closing on three different dates.
The third is during homecoming week. I don't have the schedule. I could see allowing one, but not all three. The third is pretty soon, so I could see making a motion to allow the third and denying the permits for the 10th and 17th. I'll make that a motion.
I'll second the motion.
All right, any other further discussion on that?
I have another question. What if someone just wanted to flag off a lane, like if they had a serving line on the sidewalk and they just wanted to kind of take a part of the road but still allow traffic to flow past? Is that something that would be accommodated and better or worse?
It's manageable, and we've seen that for the placement of dumpsters and whatnot. I mean, so it's something that can be done.
That's something that could be done through staff. As he said, we do that all the time for dumpsters in parking lanes and things like that.
But it's not regularly scheduled. It's not like three weeks in a row.
No, I mean, and that was something that struck, I think, the street department and me about the frequency of these. I mean, like you hit on, it's usually special event, boom, not repetitively. And this is, again, a pretty major thoroughfare at 4:00 PM. Granted, universities starting to wind down then, but you still have a lot of traffic on that street.
Any other questions or comments? So the motion is to allow the dinner date of October 3rd, but to deny the dinner dates of October 10th and 17th, correct? All right. So we'll vote on that.
Can you tell me who's second in that?
You can.
Killian, thank you.
Yep.
Francis?
No.
Stockhausen?
No.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Sharp?
No.
Doss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes our consent calendar, and we do have one person who has asked to speak under Citizens' Comments, who's probably really happy she picked tonight.
Oh, yeah, wait a week.
If you, give your name, please, and your address.
My name is Stephanie Sager-Barratt, and I live at 365 West Dewey Street. And I'm here tonight on behalf of the committee that puts on the Platteville Historic Reenactment. We had our 21st event a couple of weeks ago, and I would just like to take this opportunity to express the committee's appreciation of what the city does to help us make this event possible. We get, we have had for 21 years incredible cooperation from the Parks and Rec, the Police Department, the museum, the EMS, when they were still part of the city. And with Luke and Doug and all of the people that work for them, they are just part of making this a very successful event. Just a couple of statistics to share with you. On Friday, which was our school day, we had 1,880 people at the park. Almost 1,600 of that total was students. And these students came from a pretty, pretty wide area. We had classes from Barnaveld, Belmont, Benton, Black Hawk, Cuba City, Darlington, Dodgeville, Fenimore, Highland, Holy Ghost, Immaculate Conception, Holy Rosary in Darlington, all of the Platteville schools, elementary, middle, and high school, River Ridge, Julesburg, Southwestern, St. Andrew Thomas, Wazika Stuben, and then homeschool groups that we know of from Dubuque, Platteville, and Mount Horeb. All of our participants enjoy coming to this event. We have a great facility out there at Mound View Park. It's rare for those of us who go to these kinds of events to have hot showers on the premises. And so, as I say, the parks are, the park is great, cooperation from the city is great, and all of our, all of our participants are eagerly looking forward to next year's event. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. It was a great event. All right, next we're going to go on to reports in our packet. Airport Commission, Doss.
Well, if you weren't at Splatville, you missed it. That's all I can say.
That's cute.
How about Public Transportation Committee, Doss?
Nothing.
Water and Sewer Commission, Sharp, Killian, or Stockhausen?
No addition.
Library Board, Klein?
No addition.
Community Safe Routes Committee, Francis?
We continue to tackle the ideas and problems of Camp Street with the help of staff and residents and even the school district and the PTO, so hopefully we're coming to some ideas soon.
So first action item, Highway Safety Improvement Program, Business Highway 151. Howard?
Yes, good evening. We've spoken about this in the past. We have the opportunity for a grant program, if you will, from the Wisconsin Department of Transportation to work on Business Highway 151 from Staley Avenue to Insight Drive. What we would be doing is converting the street to, from the current two lanes from Staley to East Side Road to a three-lane section so that there's a center-left turn lane similar to what we have on Water Street. From East Side Road to the divided four-lane, we would take that undivided four-lane and make that a three-lane highway cross-section. What the issue, we had a open house here on the 12th, and there were many people there. There were about 25 folks. We had Linda Richardson and Brad Byham from DOT also attend. Most of the discussion was not about the driving lanes themselves, but it was about pedestrian and bicycle accommodations. We've gotten additional information since then that under DOT rules and regulations, they would not be allowed to participate in a sidewalk on the south side of Business 151 from Staley to Water Street. If we wanted to do that, that would be 100% city cost. So overall, I believe that the people at the open house seem to be very positive about the project, and that, I believe that most of them were in favor of the project and would hope that either the state or the city look at funding some of the additional pedestrian improvements. So we're recommending that we approve this project so that, and have, allow the city manager the authority to sign the agreement with DOT.
Questions, anyone?
What about the other additions, number one and number three? Number one being the congestion crosswalk near Staley, and number three, the crossing, crossings, the final two legs at Water.
Number one would also, would also need to be at 100% city cost. They did say that as long as the city works with them to install or have sidewalk installed or a pathway installed from the intersection on the east side, that they would, they would work with us to improve the crossings, like the pedestrian island, or make sure that the islands were pedestrian-friendly. They would not necessarily participate with the sidewalk trail, but we made that clear to the developer of that property that has those four businesses there, that should the city request it, the developer would need to fund for sidewalk or trail or whatever along that section. So I think that that's something that we could do pretty easily to allow for full four-way pedestrian crossing at Water Street.
Very good.
Didn't you mention Staley?
Yeah, you answered the first one.
Other questions?
Well, what about speed? You know that, most people know that going north, which is really downhill, on Business 151 is difficult to stop all that traffic. The speed is really difficult. And the reason I say is because I watch it every day.
Oh, coming in from County D towards Staley Avenue?
Right, correct.
Okay. We've talked about that in the past. This project has nothing to do with the speeds and speed limits. There are three jurisdictions that would have to work together to agree to reduce speeds if they were, if they were warranted by a speed study. That would be the Grant County, the township, as well as the city would all have to agree because parts of the, are in each of those jurisdictions. The issue is that the, the conditions, the way that that street is built, is not conducive for lowering speeds. The only way that you would get people to reduce speeds on that would be extremely heavy enforcement by the Sheriff's Department and/or, and/or the city police.
Yeah, exactly.
Is the speed going to stay the same?
Yes.
Beyond, by, beyond Napa, 40 miles an hour?
Yes.
Okay. My, my next question is, as far as the width, the footprint of all this, is the footprint going to be the same throughout what it is right now? Or where is, where is the street going to be widened? You talked about, with me one time, about by Napa going into the cliff. Is that correct?
Yes. Part of the, part of the project, because of, because of the fatality that we had, bicycle fatality out there, part of the, part of the project allows for state, for the state to fund a pedestrian bicycle path, and the original proposal is to place that on the south side of Business 151 from, from the driveway at Napa, basically intersecting with the MPO trail that comes right there, and then extending it eastward all the way to East Side Road so that it can link in with the trail going out to the hospital and come back into town on the sidewalk on Mineral Street. That would be the only place where additional pavement would be placed, and it would be placed off of the road. So you have the existing pavement that's, that's for the road right now, and then there would be a separation, and then there... would be a separation, and then there would be pavement for a trail. And so, the only way to do that would be to go into the rock. All of that is within the existing right-of-way, so there's no right-of-way that's needed to be acquired from private property owners.
Okay. One thing I noticed out there is that, that area is grassed over after a number of years. When, when this thing is cut back in the rock, what's going to be exposed? A rock left for us to look at, and, or is that going to be brought back to appearance what it looks like now?
That would be part of the issues through the design process.
And that brings up the next question. If we go through the design process, are we going to be seeing it from time to time? Are we going to see the design when we get down near the end and told, well, here's the design?
I don't have the exact times or...
So, there'll be some times.
But there will be, there will be at least one, and I, I would hope more than one public information meeting to discuss the proposed designs.
I don't want to take too much time here, but as far as people, we're going to have a sidewalk along the, let's see, south side. Let's take, for example, Fireman Fleet. People be going along on that sidewalk, so...
There's no sidewalk there.
There's nothing there?
No.
Nothing?
No.
I thought the idea was to get people out to the, way out to Walmart. There's no sidewalk? Where does the sidewalk stop?
The, the, it would be a shared pedestrian bike pathway, and it would go from the Napa driveway to East Side Road.
It stops at East Side?
That's correct.
It doesn't go anything beyond?
That's, you are correct. It does not go beyond that intersection because it's linked into the existing trail that would extend south to the hospital, where you cross the street and get on the sidewalk on Mineral Street.
So, there's no pedestrian bike continuing out, east side out to, say, Insight?
That's correct. There, there's nothing in this project to do that.
Other questions or comments?
Yes, Howard. I just wanted to clarify about the Water Street main intersection. So, we will be adding the other two crosswalks?
We need to work with the DOT, and they said that if we promise to put in the sidewalk connection from the MPO trail on that east side of Water Street up to the intersection of Water Street, that they would include pedestrian crossing of Water Street at that location, you know, from east to west and from south to north.
So, as long as we do this and the Melios does it, they'll do the, the part of the road?
They're asking us, they're asking us to promise to do that, and I'm just reminding you that when we approved that, that development, that we said that at some point in the future, if the city required the developer, the owner, to put in that walkway, that they would do it at their expense. So, that would not necess, if the city agrees to do that, that's a way to do it without putting it on the taxpayers.
Another question is, in crossing, say, Water Street and crossing Business 151, as far as pedestrians, how much time are you going to have to cross those? Are you going to be able to cross those the whole width? Are we going to be standing on an island someplace in the wintertime with snow splashing on you and salt and so forth? So, how's that going to, how do you envision that crossing? There are places here now in the city, for example, if you try to cross from Water Street and go, go up Pine Street, that's a long left turn, and you're taking your life in your hands when you try to cross that one, when they, when they take a, a left-hand turn coming toward you. Anyway, I'm just curious, are you going to be standing on an island someplace, waiting for people to go by?
That is, that is a design issue that needs to be addressed during the design process. The way the initial, the way the initial concept is, they were not designing refuge islands in the middle, but that may change depending on how the, how the design itself works out. It's a balancing act because in order, in order to go across that intersection, you have to basically hold up vehicle traffic as if you have a toddler or a person with a walker or a wheelchair. So, you know, that, that crossing would be extended if you had to go from the, you know, extreme north to south or, or the other way around. But that's all part of the design process that would be the next phase after we approve the agreement.
But anyway, I'm expressing my concern as to what might happen.
I understand.
Because it's, it's a time that's bad enough crossing at Pine Street and Chestnut because you have people taking a right or left turn there. They're taking right turns. So, and you don't, and even at that place, you don't have enough time to make across the street as far as the timing.
I was not aware of that the timings at those other intersections were, were a problem. If you want, we can discuss that.
Well, maybe it's my, maybe it's my age, I'm slowing down.
I, I doubt that, but let me, I, I think we should discuss that later if, if you wish.
Yeah, let's move on.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, we do have a request to approve the Business Highway 151 HSIP project and delegate authority to the city manager to sign the agreement with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the Business Highway 151 HSIP project and delegate authority to the city manager to sign the agreement with the Wisconsin DOT.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Francis?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Dawes?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is establishment of consistent outdoor warning siren, siren activation guidelines and elimination of the noon siren. And if you have questions, the fire chief is here. So, for the sake of the meeting, we want to just briefly discuss what you're asking, what the ask is.
Sure. So, what we've gone through is we've basically tried to standardize and, and take the confusion out of all the types of outdoor warning sirens, and we've already taken one step in eliminating the use of the sirens to alert the firefighters of an incident. We receive those through our pagers and through cell phones. So, as, multiple times a year, we hear that people don't understand the differences between the sirens and don't know when it's for a fire or when it's for a severe storm. We've decided to stop using it for that. We also feel that there's some confusion along with the noon whistle that is the same tone as the storm siren. So, to eliminate all confusion, we just want to see the outdoor storm sirens used specifically just for severe weather notification only.
Questions, anyone?
Yeah, I have a question. Why don't you have an all-clear whistle?
If you give an all-clear, then you assume all liability that no other storm or other damage could come up at any time. So, I don't think the city wants to take the liability of stating that it is clear for everybody to get out of their, out into the public. If something were to hap, happen, then it would fall back on the city as we issued the all-clear.
What's the liability if the city never issues a warning?
I, there's not really a liability that way. Obviously, they, you know, you use the information given to you by either storm spotters or the National Weather Service, and sometimes the storms pop up quicker than you can actually notify people. But obviously, as the Weather Service and everybody says, you know, people just need to remain vigilant of the weather in their area and know that there's those potentials there, and we will give you notification whenever we have the ability to or feel that it is necessarily when we can, so.
Any other questions? Comments?
I move we discontinue the use of the outdoor warning siren as a noon siren.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? We'll vote.
Francis?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Dawes?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is the Sunshine Fund policy. So, I can take this one. If you have any questions, Nicolau could probably answer.
Sure. So, the Sunshine Fund policy was already in place, but Karen was recommending an update to that policy, which you have in your package, and it just provides a more concise and uniform set of guidelines which better reflect what our current practice is in using that Sunshine Fund. I'd be glad to answer, attempt to answer any questions you might have.
Questions, anyone?
I've adopted the updated Sunshine Fund policy.
Second.
The motion and a second. We'll vote.
Francis?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Dawes?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Contract 1218, Hillside Cemetery paving. Howard?
Yes. We budgeted $35,000 to pave roads in Hillside Cemetery from the Hillside Cemetery Perpetual Care Funds. We opened a single bid due to the, for this work. The base bid, paving the streets north and south of the main entry road was the base bid, and then we also did an alternate bid for the entry road that came in at an additional $19,000. Base bid came in $39,677.20. The project was designated to be paid by this perpetual care fund. The current fund balance is a little over $141,000. It's, the balance does not increase very much because it's half the cost of lot sales and any interest payments on that. Since the entry road is in better shape, staff is recommending delay paving the entry road and doing only the side roads, and that the additional funds be transferred from the perpetual care fund to cover the difference.
Questions, anyone?
Is it imperative, when is this work going to be done?
We hope that it'll be done yet this year.
But there is no timeline on this work in the contract?
No, not at this point. If it, if it does have to go over till spring, then I'd have to look at any possible adjustments in case oil prices are adjusted. And if so, then we would have to come back.
Was that customary, that there wouldn't be a timeline included?
Part of this is the fact that our, our city staff workers are doing part of the work, and that depends on our workload.
We wouldn't want to put down asphalt after we get freezing.
We would, we would look at the weather before we allowed to do that.
I've seen that done, and it's not, in general, very acceptable as to what might happen. I've seen cracks in the, in the pavement within a year.
I understand.
Is there a motion? In contract 1218.
I move to approve contract 1218, Hillside Cemetery paved base bids to Iverson Construction for the bid price of $39,677.20. This is the number eight, yes. And transfer the additional funds to the Hillside Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund to cover the difference.
A second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Move vote.
Francis?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Dawes?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is DNR Forester Grant. Luke?
Yes, so this was brought before you two weeks ago. Essentially, we are writing a grant to utilize the city's ongoing forestry efforts to help homeowners, homeowners deal with emerald ash bor on their property, which would include removal and replacement up to 50%, up to $500 per property if we were awarded by the grant from the DNR. The one change I will note from the last time it came up is we are asking for additional funds from the Department of Natural Resources. We're asking for $18,500. I believe when it last came up, it was going to be $10,000, and that was just a calculation that we did based on where our efforts would put us and trying to maximize to help as many people as possible.
So, the request is really for an $18,000?
Yes. There's $13,500 that would be added to the budget, but additional $5,000 would be for wood shipping, which would take place regardless, but we're asking for that to be covered with this grant as well, if that kind of makes sense. So, we're trying, trying to, there's going to be increased wood because of emerald ash bor at our city's dump site, and we've, we've talked with the DNR, and they agreed that it might be appropriate to allocate or apply some of that towards this grant as well.
Right. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Francis?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Dawes?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is disallowance of claim, Clayton.
Yes. We, we're conducting street reconstruction on Virgin Avenue. Part of the construction plans, curb and gutter was removed. Berms were installed to divert water from low-lying properties. During rainstorms on June 8th, the berms failed and water damaged two properties owned by Ms. Clayton. She had cleanup and restoration performed. We advised her to provide any claims for damages to rural construction. She had an attorney draft a notice of claim against the city of Platteville for the reimbursement of damages. On advice of our city attorney and our insurance company, we provided a copied rural construction for reimbursement, and under Wisconsin statutes, they also advised that the city send her a disallowance of claim letter or, as part of this process. As a side note, just so that you understand, the rural constructions insurance company is working with Ms. Clayton's attorney. They're, they've been asking, going back and forth, asking for additional information. So, as far as I know, the process is, is continuing at this point. I, I don't have a final resolution, but based on the advice of our insurance and attorney, we should be doing this.
Well, if she doesn't get her full request, and what's her recourse? Well, if she doesn't get her full request, then what's her recourse? Going to an attorney for this small amount is not very likely to take place. So the homeowner then suffers a loss. So, and if that occurs, then what is the recourse for the homeowner? When the city says, we disallow it?
I'm not an attorney, but under the state statutes, there are specific legal remedies that she has, um, should the claim through the construction company's insurance does not happen. I don't understand why it would not happen. This is, this is a, not a regular occurrence, but this is a, this is something that happens occasionally. And this is something that is normally handled by the, um, construction company's insurance, insurance.
I guess the thing that bothers me here is you use the word, the terminology officially disallowed. Now, basically, you're, you're transferring the claim to rural and it's a matter of transfer.
If I'm not mistaken, Howard, you can correct me. I believe that we have to do this in order to be, to allow this to be forwarded on to the insurance companies for them to, to work with, um, with the construction company, his insurance company. So if we, so this is a legal step in the process.
The letter goes on to say that she, that it would be after six months. So the, this claim could be brought back to us. Even though it's disallowed, it would appear from the wording that it could come back again within six months if there's no resolution.
As I said, I'm not an attorney, but I believe based on the wording, you are correct. She would have to file additional legal paperwork within that six-month period.
Yes, she would, it's stated here in this letter from the city manager.
Right, is there a motion?
I move to approve the disallowance of claim for damages submitted by Ms. Helen J. Clayton.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Frances?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is sale of fifty-five South Court Street, Joe.
Yes, the city has agreed to terms regarding the sale of the former senior center property at fifty-five South Court Street. Since that negotiation was done in closed session, the council does have to formally take action regarding that sale in open session. So that's the reason, even though you're aware, we're selling, it has to be done again with a formal vote. So, uh, the sale would be to RJ AJ Properties LLC in the amount of a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. And it would be, uh, subject to the terms in the offered purchase document dated September thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen. And basically, the terms were subject to financing. The, the city has to remove some of the carpeting in the basement. And there were some requirements about making sure that there were no easements or restrictions that would prevent the buyer from using the property for what they wanted to do. At this point, um, everything's been taken care of except the financing is still being worked on. But, um, that's proceeding. So staff would recommend approval.
This would not allow this to be residential, right?
Correct.
Yeah, approving this. Is there a motion?
I move. We accept the sale of fifty-five South Court Street, the former senior center building, at a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. To, I missed the line here on who the buyer would be.
AJ Properties?
Correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we'll vote.
Frances?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Information and discussion items, contract seven eighteen Thin Overlay, Howard.
Yes, here's our annual contract for thin overlay. Wheel taxes pays for a hundred and twenty thousand for this project. This year, the council added thirty thousand for a total of one fifty. We solicited bids, had Iverson Construction. They're the only ones who normally do this work. Uh, we have a number of streets listed on the bid. Due to the repairs needed for the center line of Chestnut Adams and Lancaster prior to painting, we're recommending dropping Union Street off the list. Still, the contract amount, one twenty-three sixty-nine, forty-eight.
Questions?
I have one question. It relates back to the September twelfth meeting pertaining to Highway fifty, one fifty-one business. They had a number of pictures up, whatever you wanna call them. And it talked about an ultra-thin overlay. Now, here you call a thin overlay three-quarters of an inch. So what is the ultra-thin overlay?
That's just the Wisconsin DOT's term for the same thing. I, I've traditionally dropped the word ultra from the, from the terminology, but it's the same product.
So we finally found out after all these years.
So what kind of repairs are needed for the center line on Chestnut Adams and Lancaster? That's really the highway to Lancaster. That was a state project, right?
Correct.
Within the last ten years?
Two thousand and six, thirteen, or twelve, almost thirteen years. What had happened was, um, soon after the project was done, the gap between the paving, uh, in the center line did not bond very well. We've been trying to seal it what we can. If you go through there, it's kind of a wide-raveled crack. And the intent here would be to use, uh, um, to use this planing attachment that we bought for our skid steer and basically grind a, a little bit of the thickness for a little bit more than the width of that and, and put regular asphalt pavement back in. So that, that, you know.
But this is a leftover problem from a state highway project. Is this a problem? I mean, this was a state highway project, is that correct?
That's correct.
And now we're, we're repairing a poorly-produced state highway project.
Yes.
And so have we advised the Department of Transportation?
I advised.
Formally of this issue?
I advised them of that in two thousand and six and two thousand and seven. And they basically washed their hands of it at that time.
Maybe we should try sending them a bill when we're done.
Other questions, then we'll go on to contract eight eighteen Highway Painting.
Yes, this would be, uh, our annual painting of center lines, uh, as we've recently discussed. Looking to repair that center line crack, uh, in the Highway eighty-one. So we would be, uh, the intent would be to repaint Highway eighty-one on Pine Street, Chestnut, Adams, and Lancaster Street. Basically, from the water and pine intersection all the way out to Ridge Avenue. Base bid was for center lines and stop bars, nineteen thousand, two thirty. Additional painting was for the additional yellow diagonal lines. Total cost, thirty thousand, nine seventy, slightly higher. Uh, I think between all the different projects, uh, I believe that we will be well within the budget overall.
Next is ordinance eighteen ten Stop Signs on Greenwood Avenue.
Yes, um, this was an oversight on our part, uh, in the past. Greenwood Avenue, uh, south of the Newman Heights Building, uh, never had stop signs. It was kind of used as a driveway extension, alley extension. There was no real need for it. Now that we have additional traffic because of the Newman Heights, there have been concerns that, uh, people will not stop appropriately. So, um, staff has used emergency authorization under, under staff to, uh, to install stop signs. But this would, um, make an actual ordinance to, um, uh, you know, codify this so that it's, uh, fully legal in the future.
Has this been repaved? Greenwood Avenue, has that been repaved since the, the new apartment building went in?
No, the, the city did a project in two thousand and ten, I believe it was. And we did that short little piece of street as, in conjunction with a bunch of other streets. Now, where the Newman Heights project needed to match into the, to the street, they had to put a patch along there.
And that goes to the center line or just to the city? Just to the city, um, edge of the street, their patch?
Their patch matches in between where they had to put the curb and the, and their parking areas to where our city street was before. They, they ended up cutting, um, cutting a joint in so that it, they could match it in properly. And then they just paved in that, that small section there.
Any other questions? That's all our information and discussion items, so is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn. Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Frances?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Motion carries.